Meeting to order. It is the City of Utica Common Council December 16th meeting, pre-caucus caucus. We're going to get started with resolution number one. This is council member Burmester. It's a proclamation to honor Frank Checkford. This is something that came up at the last meeting. We were holding off with it, so hopefully he could come into the chambers and receive this proclamation. But obviously, that's not going to happen at this point. So my personal recommendation, and we'll take whatever lead you want, council member Burmester. But I feel like we should pass this tonight and hopefully have the clerk send this out to him. Is this something that everyone feels comfortable with?
Yeah, I feel good with that. Thank you.
I'd like to put my name as well, just for the clerk. Yes, councilperson friend?
Thank you. I just have one small writing question, which is in the third paragraph. And maybe this is what people talk, and I'm not familiar with it, but it says, having a difficult time recycling into life after prison? Did we mean returning to life after prison? I've never heard that term recycling into life.
I think if it was hyphenated, it would actually make sense. It's possible they did mean that. But if you guys want to change it. Did you follow my train of thought there, councilperson friend?
Where would you have a hyphen? Where would you put a hyphen?
R E hyphen cycling. So it would be different. Yeah.
Different from recycling, right? Because when I hear recycling, I think about plastic and stuff.
But that's up to councilman.
It's up to councilman Burmester.
Is that something that you'd like? Councilmember Burmester?
I have no preference. I really don't have any preference. I just want to recognize what he did.
All right, so we'll hyphenate the recycling because it definitely makes more sense that way. Thank you, councilperson friend. And then, does anybody have any problem making this full council? I think it would be.
I'm all for that.
I'm for that.
I'm for that also. Yes, DeBrango, yes.
Okay, next, it is ordinance number two. It is an ordinance to amend section 2-2-128 fees of the Utica City Code regarding fuel requests. Councilmember Miola, did you want to kind of give us a little rundown on this and what your thoughts are behind it?
Basically, it's just updating our fees for the foil request. Most of the foil requests do come quite cumbersome on our clerk and other parts of the city. And if we're going to take away hours and hours from their job, we'd like to see if we can least compensate for the papers and what we're using for the ink and our printers and what have you to get them that information. With that said, I went over this with our clerk, and she feels very comfortable with it.
So it's going basically from what to what?
If you look on the legislation in front of you, you'll see the old legislation, which has a line through it, and the new legislation, which doesn't have the line through it.
I just meant who are listening could get a quick story if that was possible for me.
So any person, yeah, 25 cents per page. And it's also comparable to our surrounding municipalities also.
I'd like to ask one quick question.
Okay.
So on D, $4, it says for every large map, but the price may increase if the size is larger than 11 by 17. What's a large map that isn't larger than 11 by 17? And $4 seems like a lot. I totally agree that we should be covering the cost of printing and copying. That shouldn't be coming out of the clerk's budget. But I'm just wondering about that D one seems like kind of high. And what's a large map if it's not larger than 11 by 17?
So councilmember friend, this is.
Melissa, would you like to answer that one?
Yeah, please. I have called other municipalities, and I did call the city clerk in Rome. I've looked on other websites, and they do charge $4 for every large map. Since I've been clerk, I have not had anyone request a map. And as far as exceeding 11 by 17, I couldn't answer that. But I have never had that request. But I do think that $4 probably large map is a good fee. I mean, I am swamped with foils. And I think that we need to definitely, you know, have these fees in place.
Right, I'm all for the fees in general. I think it's a very good initiative. I really do.
Councilperson Miola, have we talked with corporate counsel to make sure that this doesn't conflict with state laws yet?
I'm under the assumption that our corporate counsel already reviewed this legislation because it was in front of the mayor's office prior.
Hi, councilwoman. This is Kate Hartnett. How are you? Can I speak, councilwoman McNeil?
Of course.
I did get this when the packet was sent to me on, I believe it was the 11th. I'm still looking it over with Charlie. I think that generally the fees are good. But one of the things we're looking into is the provision about clerical expenses and stuff like that. And we're just ascertaining whether that complies with the state law that can't really be modified. So if this goes into committee tonight, we should have a full answer for you by the next council meeting.
Madam Chair, can I have the floor?
We're not in a hurry for this. I'm pretty sure we could put in committee.
Oh, thank you, councilman.
Councilwoman McNeil, can I have the floor?
You have the floor.
This is, yeah, this is on par with what other cities is doing, right? So, I mean, it's no rush, but if this is on par with the other cities, I don't see why we couldn't do it tonight. That's just my opinion. But again, it's no rush. Like councilman Miola said, it's his legislation, but.
Okay, so we will put this one in committee. Next one is.
One question.
Councilperson Williams?
This is Mark.
Yep.
Hello?
You have the floor, Mark.
Yeah, that's me.
You're breaking up there.
Yeah, well, hey. Yeah, for Melissa, how many foils do you get and they don't come pick up?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. You're breaking up. Can you repeat that?
He said, how many foils are you receiving to process that they do not come get?
Do not come get? I mean, I get an abundance of foils. A lot of the times, we can email them or mail them. It's just depending on, I can't really give you a number, but it's just depending on what they request. Right now, obviously, we can't have anybody come in because we're close to the public. But most of the ones that are being processed is through email right now. So.
Okay.
It varies depending on the department that have to process the foils. I mean, police records takes a lot of time. A lot of their reports, fire, you know, they have their reports. And we would normally have these people come in and pick them up if that's what they request. But right now, we are emailing them or mailing them.
Okay, so we're going to put. Any other questions on it? All right.
Yeah, I have a question for corporation counsel.
Okay.
On this.
You have the floor.
Would it be, I mean, when you send something email, there is subject to somebody, you know, hacking into it or whatever. Do we have to email? Could they actually come and get the actual pages and whatever we have to provide them? I'm just asking just so it is confidential information. Because when you send an email out, it could be sent to many different facilities or places, whatever. But if you do come to pick up the packet, you know, they're going to, I think it's a little bit more safe and secure. And you know who you're giving it to. That's just a question. Maybe you can answer. Thanks.
Sure, Councilman DeBrango. So basically, if we're providing records via foil, they aren't confidential. And also, if we're able to provide a record electronically, and the requester asks for it to be provided electronically, we have to give it to them electronically. So there isn't really a way around that, unfortunately. Sorry. Hope that answered your question.
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to ordinance number three. It is a transfer of funds from 2020 to 2021 fiscal year, unemployment benefits. It is coming from account A59089-806, workers' compensation in the amount of $25,000 to A59089-805, unemployment benefits, and that is in the amount of $25,000. Explanation is to adjust for unexpected employment costs due to COVID-19. Anyone have any issues with this?
I believe President Galemy and Councilman LaMedico approved this because they are on the E and A. And I'm sure if they have any issues, then, you know, I'm sure they'll let us know. Thank you.
Yeah, this, yeah, Councilman DeBrango, this one speaks for itself. And the monies were adequately provided from A59089 from a report from the budget director. So you're good on this one. And the next one as well.
It is ordinance number four. It is a transfer of funds from 2020 to 21 fiscal year sidewalk replacement program. It is coming from line item B405-8662.520, international district in the amount of $19,000 to B405-8662.528, residential sidewalk replacement program in the amount of $19,000. The explanation for this transfer is to adjust for unexpected interest in 2020 for sidewalk replacements. Moving on, resolution.
Can I ask just one quick question? I'm just curious, what is international districts? What is that budget line? Can someone explain that to me?
Other, I believe you're on.
I am as well. This is Brian Thomas.
Thank you, Brian.
The international district is a, was funding for Bleecker Street. It's part of a package of programs that the city had put together several years ago for Bleecker Street. We've done a considerable amount of work down on Bleecker Street, including a facade program, as well as sidewalks that the city put in. This is just funding that was beside several years ago. It has not been accessed and likely won't be accessed. So we're proposing to move it to the side, the residential sidewalk replacement program, which was not funded out of this year's T D B G program because we projected that we had enough in there. However, this past fall, we've had a, an uptick in the number of residents that have put in replacement sidewalks. And we just need to pay those reimbursement requests back to the property owners.
Thank you very much, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you.
Moving on, resolution number five. It is sponsored by councilmember Moody. It is a commissioner of deeds, Thomas P. Allard. Are you good with this one, councilmember Moody?
I'm good.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Good. Yeah, he said it was all set.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear. The next resolution, number six. It is commissioner of deeds for current council members who need a new commissioner of deeds. That would be myself, councilmember Miola, councilmember Beatrice, councilmember DeBrango. The next is in the committee of whole. I believe we will be meeting ordinance number nine, adopting the new zoning plan this evening.
Are we actually adopting that, or are we just doing the public hearing or?
Well, there's the public this evening, and I didn't know if this was me asking if we would be adopting it, entertaining it.
I, may I have the floor for a moment? I would hope that we would not be expected to vote on this tonight since this is the night that there is a public hearing. I mean, that would be a very odd way to do it. I am not prepared to adopt this tonight. We have not yet seen any of the changes that Commissioner Thomas has said are in the works. And I'm not worried about the fact that we haven't seen them yet, but until we see them, we're certainly not going to adopt this.
They did just post them today, but I actually had the same reservation. I wanted to go through the final as well.
Right, well, given that it's a 160-page document, right. I didn't know that it was posted today. I certainly have it. It's going to take me a long time to go through it. So I'm not prepared to adopt this today.
Okay. Is there any other legislation that has been tabled or that's in committee that we'd like to discuss before this evening?
Local law? Number five or six? Or what is it?
Six.
Six?
Local law number six.
Local law number six? Yeah, it was sent on the table for seven days. I'd like to move it.
Any discussion before we come to the floor? Okay, if there aren't any other questions or anything else anybody wants to discuss, I believe we are done, and we can adjourn the pre-caucus caucus.
All right, so everyone just stay on the line. The meeting won't change, and the main meeting will start promptly at 7:00. Thank you.
Was there a second?
Oh, I was just, I thought I heard one. Sorry about that.
I'll second that. Councilman Beatrice, that was.
All right, video streaming. If you could please mute the feed until 7:00.
December 16th, 2020, I'm gonna call this meeting of the City of Utica Town and Council for order. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
McNeil, Vermaster, Friend, Niola, Moody, Beatrice Williamson, Lamedico, DeBrango, Galimi, all present.
Thank you. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. The seats members of the council pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America, go the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Okay. First order of business, I'm gonna go over the minutes from the prior meeting. The minutes have been posted. Is there a motion to wave to?
Beatrice.
All right, Beatrice has a motion. Is there a second?
McNeil.
Okay. A quick roll call vote. Let's get things moving. McNeil?
Yes.
Vermaster?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Niola?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Lamedico?
Yeah.
Brango?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay. Let's see here. First order of business this evening is a public hearing. On the following legislation. Okay, so we have a public hearing this evening on the ordinance establishing a zoning regulation for the city of Utica. Clerk, has all communications been communicated to the council and/or have people requested to have things read into the record?
I have not received anything from the public.
Okay, can you please just confirm that it was advertised three times in accordance with law?
It was advertised three times. It was advertised on December 4th, 5th, and 6th.
Thank you very much. The public hearing on this piece of legislation is now closed. The council now may act on this legislation at any time. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move through the city business first. Clerk, do we have any cash reports, miscellaneous communications, and/or mayor communications this evening?
I do not have any communications, nor do I have a cash report.
Okay, I would like to just note that the mayor is placing a snow emergency in effective 11:00 PM tonight. So anyone who is watching the YouTube feed or on this, make sure your vehicles are off the road and you are following the emergency order. Thank you. All right, reports from the city officers. Assistant Chief Noon?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh yeah, just update the council, just like the general public. The department is seeing an uptick in members testing positive for COVID. I think to date, we've had upwards of a dozen members test positive. Most, most of those numbers have been in the last few weeks. Along with those, we've lost some due to exposure to those members, those who've gone home symptomatic from work. So we're dealing with that. I can't say enough, our members are doing a great job, you know, dealing with their illness and coming back to work. It's been quite stressful on them, obviously, with the holidays and wondering whether they're bringing it home to their families and stuff. It's what they signed up for, but it's been very stressful for them, so I can't say enough as hard as our members are working.
Thank you.
And with that, I'd like to wish everybody on the council and everybody listening a safe and happy holiday season.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Captain Bazner, I believe you are on representing the UPD.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I have nothing to report from the police department tonight.
All right, thank you very much. Corporation Council, Catherine Hartnett, anything this evening?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
Mr. Sleen, can I ask Catherine a question?
Yes, yes, you may.
Catherine, I thought I saw amendments to the zoning ordinance that were in fact prepared. Now, that was quite some time ago, and I could be wrong about that. Because councilperson Friend has said that, she hasn't reviewed it. But I thought I saw some amendments in accordance with what had been agreed upon two or three meetings ago. Do you have any information on that, whether it was really done or not?
Was that for Commissioner Thomas?
No, I was asking Catherine that.
Yep.
Bazner, okay.
I believe that those amendments were worked out with the interested council members and that Commissioner Brian Thomas made the updates. And I also believe that the updated zoning ordinance was, proposed zoning ordinance was posted to the website today.
Then probably the questions should be for the council persons, because I think Mr. Thomas is at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas, do you have anything else this evening?
Yes, President Galimi, just to address that question. The city website has the latest ordinance and the latest zoning map listed on it. That was posted probably at the beginning of the month, several weeks ago. I, Councilman DeBrango let me know earlier today that what has been put on the Ecode 360 website may not be the most up to date. So I would suggest that everyone look at the city website link for the latest map as well as the zoning ordinance. I will say there is one change that we are going to propose to the zoning map. So that, I was hoping to have it today in time for the meeting, but our consultant was having technological issues and was not able to make it. That change is a result of the notifications that the council asked be sent out. I got a phone call from a business owner on Erie Street who noted that his property is in a commercial district and was being changed to a mixed residential district. We took a look at that in-house. We also conferred with our consultant and agreed that that should not be mixed residential. The north side of Erie Street should be commercial in nature to match the rest of, the rest of the area. So there will be one more posting of a map that, within the next day or two, and that should be the final map.
Could I have the floor, Mr. President?
Yes, as long as it pertains to Commissioner Thomas, because this is the reports from the city officers. Councilperson Friend?
Yes, this is the, I'm very glad to hear that there's an updated version of the E, of the, of the new zoning code. This is the first I've heard of it. You said since the beginning of the month, we had a meeting at This is the first I've heard of it. You said since the beginning of the month, we had a meeting at, the last time we talked about this, you said it wasn't done yet, they were also working on the DRI, and so they hadn't gotten to the zoning. This is literally the first I have heard that there is now an updated zoning code on the website. So I just, you know, since I intend to read it, and since it's a hundred and sixty pages, it would be good to have as much advance notice as possible that such a thing is available and I can begin reading it. Thank you.
Well, I think at this juncture, especially considering the commissioner's comments on the other change, it's not yet ready until the next meeting, even if we were to consume the whole document. So, anything else this evening, Commissioner Thomas?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you very much. Let's see, I already did Corporation Council, is the codes, I don't believe codes is on today. So that concludes the reports from the city officers. Petitions, remonstrances, appeals, and legislation from the floor, First District and Majority Leader Maria McNeil, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to wish everybody a happy holidays, happy New Year. Just remind everybody to be safe and make good choices. You know, with everything going on, we still want to be around our family and loved ones, but just being responsible about it. With that being said, I will move to bring forward ordinance number four, the Transfer of Funds, two thousand and twenty, twenty-one fiscal year sidewalk replacement program. Transfer of Funds, B four zero five dash eight six two dot five two four.
Do we have a second?
DeBrango.
All right, DeBrango's the second. This is a transfer of funds from international districts, nineteen thousand dollars, to residential sidewalk replacement program. It's a total of nineteen thousand dollars. This has been discussed and approved prior by the Board of VNA. Your votes. Maria, McNeil?
Yes.
Burmaster?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Miola?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Lamedico?
Yay.
Brango?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader, would you like to also move ordinance three?
Yes, please.
Ah, okay. All right, is there a second for ordinance three, Transfer of Funds from workers' compensation unemployment benefits?
Burmaster.
Thank you very much. This was for a total of twenty-five thousand dollars to adjust for unexpected unemployment costs due to COVID. Your votes, McNeil? Burmaster?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Miola?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Lamedico?
Yay.
Brango?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
The next resolution I'd like to move is Resolution Number Six. It's a Commissioner of Deeds for Councilmember Miola, Beatrice, DeBrango, myself.
Okay.
Is there any way I can get myself on that one too? For some reason, my name didn't appear on it.
I'm gonna need the application first, and then we could go ahead and put your name on it for the next meeting.
All right, just when I, I'm not sure when I can, gonna be able to get there though, that's the only issue.
You could just, I'll send you the application, you can email it back from me, councilmember, and then we'll go ahead and put your name on it. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
All right, resolved that the following people are Commissioner of Deeds for a term commencing January first, two thousand and twenty-one, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Your votes, McNeil?
Yes.
Burmaster?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Miola?
Yes.
Moody?
Yeah.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Lamedico?
Yay.
Brango?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Majority Leader?
That'll be all this evening. Thank you, President.
Thank you very much. Second District, Councilman Burmaster, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to bring Resolution Number One for recognition of Frank Shackelford.
All right, thank you very much. Would you like to read the proclamation, or would you like someone to?
Well, I, I can't see the letters, even on my phone, I can't see them.
Well, let's
Mr. President, I'd be happy to read it.
All right, please do so.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
No worries. Proclamation to honor Frank Shackelford. Whereas on December sixth, two thousand and twenty, Frank Shackelford, a resident of the Second District in Utica, New York, shall receive the prestigious President Volunteer Service Award from Catholic Charities in recognition for his lengthy service as a volunteer helping persons who have drug problems and are attempting to turn around their lives, even after having spent part of their lives incarcerated, and whereas a recent article in the Observer-Dispatch featured Mr. Shackelford as one of those persons who traveled, who had traveled a long and hard road that included drug use, the commission of crimes, and eventually prison, and whereas Mr. Shackelford, following the latest, his latest release from prison, decided to take a different turn in his life by donating his time and experience to help others who have faced incarceration or were having a difficult time recycling into life after prison, and whereas Mr. Shackelford joined and participated in a group known as Incarcerated Flavors that meets and discusses programs that may be helpful to curb criminal behavior in youths, and also have an impact on recidivism, which is reported to be as high as forty percent in New York State, and whereas Frank Shackelford, as an ex-con who committed violent crime, decided to do something more constructive with his life and not live his life like his father, who he describes as a quote "violent alcoholic" end quote, resolved that the Common Council for the City of Utica does join with Catholic charities in recognizing a man who has demonstrated that it is never too late to turn your life around and be a productive and meaningful member of the community.
Your votes, thanks very much. McNeil?
Yes.
Burmaster?
Yes.
Yes.
Miola?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes. Yes.
Lamedico?
Yay.
Thank you. DeBrango, I believe you already.
Yes, I believe we're gonna make this full council.
All right, full council it is. Thank you. Clerk, please reflect that in the final print of the proclamation. Thank you. Councilman Burmaster, do you have anything else this evening?
Yeah, I just wanna say, I wanna thank everybody for the, for all the help this year, from the council, from the president, from the judge, the clerks, all the different department heads. They've made a a difficult task, not so difficult, and I appreciate it wholeheartedly, and I just wanna reach out to each and every one of you for, for helping me. And I just wanna wish you a happy and safe holiday, and and hopefully we'll see everybody next year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Third District, Councilperson Friend, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any legislation tonight. I, I do just wanna talk a little bit about our present circumstances. It would seem that we're on the cusp of a very dark winter. It's really worrisome how all of our COVID numbers are going up. Oneida, most of Oneida County has been now designated as a yellow zone by the state of New York. Some people, you know, had thought that the pandemic would go away after the election, but in fact, it's only gotten, in fact, much worse, and I believe that it's gonna continue to get much worse before it gets better. So I really would like to encourage people to stop gathering in large groups. Please stop gathering in large groups. It's a sacrifice for all of us. I have very small Thanksgiving, which isn't my idea of a good time, and I'm not gonna see any of my family at Christmas, but we really, this is what we have to do. But in the midst of all that darkness, there is in fact some hope, which is that the vaccination has now begun to arrive, and in fact, it arrived just today. The Mohawk Valley Health System administered their first vaccine. So I really hope that everyone who can be vaccinated will do so as soon as it becomes available to you. The vaccination is how, we won't only protect our own health, but it's how we will also make sure that we can't spread the sickness to other people. This is an infectious disease, that's why it's so worrisome. So please get vaccinated for the sake of everyone around you, including all the people who won't be able to get vaccinated. Young children can't be vaccinated, pregnant women can't be vaccinated, there are people who are medically ineligible for vaccinations, and so we have to get vaccinated for them, as well as for ourselves. So the vaccination is really our only way out of this terrible disease. So I would really like to encourage everyone to do so as soon as possible. And as everybody else says, I hope everybody does have a happy holiday, even if it's not, even if we're not able to gather with large groups the way we might like to. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Fourth District, President Protem and Councilmember Frank Miola, you have the floor.
Mr. President, glad to hear your voice on this council meeting. I really wasn't looking forward to replacing you, because your job is quite cumbersome with this electronics stuff. I really have no clue. Well, thank you for getting me out quickly. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and thanks for being there to potentially back me up.
Go ahead. I'd like to, I'd like to move forward the local law number six. It came in compliance with municipal home law, where it was placed on the best of the common council on December second for the seven-day rule. I'd like to move it to vote, sir. Would you like me to read it into the record?
Yes, let's, do we have a second?
Burmaster.
Burmaster's the second. Yes, please read it into the record.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Being enacted on the Common Council of City of Utica, subdivision D, section two dot zero two three, the City of Utica Charter shall read as follow. Any mayor, president of the common council, or comptroller elected as such for two consecutive terms, shall be ineligible to be elected to the same office for a term of office next following the end of the second consecutive term of office for which they were elected. Number two, any other elected official, which term of office of two years elected as such for four consecutive terms, shall be ineligible to be selected, elected to the same office for a term, for the next term, following the end of the fourth consecutive term of office in which they were elected. Number three, any person who served the maximum consecutive terms for mayor, comptroller, president of the common council, or councilmember may seek the same term of office again after one term has elapsed. Section two, this local law shall not apply for those officials who were reelected and their terms extended pursuant to local law number two two thousand and seventeen, who shall continue to be governed by local law number two of two thousand and seventeen. Section three, this law will be coming to effect January first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, this has been on the table, this has a second. Are we ready for a vote on this, or does anyone need to request the floor?
I guess I'd like to request the floor. I can do it now, or I can do it later.
Is it a qualification of a vote, or is it a debate for, prior to vote?
I guess it's debate prior to vote.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm, I'll, I'll do this very quickly. I said most of my piece last time, but I do just wanna respond to a couple of the arguments that were made the last time we discussed this, but I will do this quickly. I wanna say, you know, plenty of people who voted for the referendum in nineteen ninety-two are still alive. One of the arguments that was made net last time, was it nineteen ninety-two, was so long ago that most of those people, or lots of those people are dead, which is just a laughable argument, right? A majority of the council was living in Utica and eligible to vote at the time that this referendum passed, and there are thousands of voters in South Utica alone who were alive at the time that this referendum passed. And in our last meeting, for a little while on Twitter, while we were in our meeting, there started to be a trend on Twitter of people saying that they were in fact alive in nineteen ninety-two. So I just wanna say that I think that that's a really
Councilman Friend, Councilman Friend, I have a question for you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Hold on, hold on.
I was the one, wait a minute, I was the one that said it, and I wanna talk to Councilman Friend. Did you vote on this?
I didn't live here at the time.
Were you living in Utica then?
I didn't live in Utica at the time.
Okay, say that loud and clear.
I did not live in Utica at the time.
All right, I'm
I'm perfectly right that's right into what I just said.
Hold on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, if, if Councilman DeBrango, I will give you the floor if you're, if you're, if you have something to say other than that after Councilperson Friend, otherwise I'm gonna have to mute people if something breaks out like that again. Thank you. Councilperson Friend? Do you have anything else?
Yeah, so the other thing I just wanna point out is that if people really didn't think that, that the referendum continued to have merit for the reasons that have been stated, why would you even return it to eight-year term limits for anyone? Right, you can't have it both ways. You can't go back to eight years for some of us, but establish twelve years for other, which is a two-tiered system, and then pretend that the referendum doesn't in fact matter, right? You can't have it both ways. But what also matters to some of you is that your own political careers get to be longer than the eight years established by voters. That's really clear.
Okay.
And then one more thing that I'll say is that, you know, another thing that Councilman DeBrango said at the last meeting was that it was, and it was really clear how sincere he was, that he wants to put this term limit behind us. He said that repeatedly. Wants to put it behind us, get over with it, move on. And here's the thing, I don't think you can do that with this legislation. This legislation is not putting it behind us. As long as we continue to ride roughshod over the will of voters, there will be a lot of angry voters out there. And if you think that we won't hear about this next year when we're all up for reelection, I, I think you're wrong, and I might be wrong about that, but I think you're wrong. And then I'll just say one more thing, which is that no one talks about how this local law is good for Utica. I haven't heard a single argument about how this is good for Utica or what matters to Utica. Not one person who has sponsored this law has argued for it or made any effort to say why it's good for the people of Utica.
Okay, is that all? Councilperson Friend?
Yes, I would like to, yes, I'm done.
All right, thank you very much. Does anyone else wanna address anything, or are we bringing this to a vote? Okay, McNeil?
Yes.
Burmaster?
Yes.
Friend?
No.
Miola?
Yes.
Moody?
No.
Beatrice?
No.
Williamson?
No.
Lamedico?
Yay.
Brango?
Yes.
Three, four, five, five yays. This has been passed and will be forwarded to the mayor in accordance with the charter and second-class city's law. Councilperson Miola, do you have anything else this evening?
I'd just like to wish everybody Merry Christmas, and please try to enjoy every amount of company with our families, but please try to do it safely. Of course, we spoke about the virus being out there, and, you know, enjoy every minute that we can with our families, but do it as safe, safety as possible. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Fifth District, Councilman Moody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm, I'll be brief. I just want to, as Councilperson Friend mentioned, the vaccine is being distributed. I've reached out to the governor's office today and to just talk about that there is still a lot of mistrust, and, you know, a lot of people are not too comfortable with the, with the vaccine, and so I think that there is a lot of room for us as a city and as a community to begin to do the necessary due diligence as councilpeople to just reassure the public of the safety of the vaccine and other things like that, and when available, to make sure that people can, can do that and can get it done. That way, everybody is safe. COVID numbers are going up, but COVID numbers are avoidable. Now, things that we can do, if we socially distance, wear our masks and don't do, you know, the big gatherings that are tempting at times, because we all miss our family and other things. I think it's, I think we can go in the right direction. I will say, given that the numbers of COVID are going up, I, I am gonna ask the Councilperson Friend with the communications and IT, you know, I think it is time now that we as a council with our president start to look at the digital governance of a city and start, and start seeing what tools and options are out there for us to even be more accessible. I know public comments period is, is something that we've talked about in the past. And a lot of cities have come up with some really cool and simple ways by which they're engaging the public more on the virtual platform. And I think it's good if we can get a committee together, committee meeting together with IT and communications component to look at digital governance and how we can be more accessible. And I think this YouTube aspect, I think is something that will even carry over once we get in person. My final thing, Mr. President, is the Electoral College voted. And I just wanna congratulate the next president-elect and Vice President Joe Biden, Kamala Harris, who will become, she will become the first woman Vice President ever to be had in the United States of America. It's a historic moment. And Hillary Clinton was not able to crack that glass ceiling, but Kamala Harris did. And she is a person of both Asian-American descent and African-American descendants. Great to see that historic moment and to be in this moment of history. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you. Sixth District, Councilman Beatrice, you have the floor.
Yes, thanks, Mr. President. First thing, I just wanna clarify. I voted against the term limit vote tonight. But as you guys all know, I'm fully in support of term limits. I've been in it. I've been the initiator of bringing the term limits back to the council. I have to say, I'm pretty proud of the council that we got it back to eight years. I'm not happy with some of the language in there where we went on for twelve years, but I'm not gonna keep going over and over. I think over the last couple of weeks, everybody on the council and everybody listening out there knows what my position was and where I stood on this. And unfortunately, it got brought up faster than it had to. And by that happening, I believe there were some things put in it that would have never been put in this if it was just waited till when I brought it out in February. The next thing I'd like to say is, I wanna wish everybody out there a Merry Christmas and please be safe. I was a person, speaking of the COVID nineteen, I was like everybody else. I followed all the rules. I did everything I can. But I just know from firsthand situation, this COVID is out there and it could, it could, you know, you could get affected very easy. And even, even, even if you're lucky enough, like I was, not to have very serious symptoms, what it does to you mentally and what the stress it puts on your family and, and everybody around you, until somebody tells you you're positive and you have to sit back for those two weeks and think about the people you are around and think about what could happen, it is, is very, very straining mentally on you. So just please, everybody out there, please be safe. And it's such a dangerous virus because you don't know that you could possibly be walking around. You, you don't feel that way. But I just stress to everybody, if you don't feel well, don't wait. Go get tested and keep yourself in quarantined and do not be around people. And again, I just wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And, and thanks for the support. And, and looks like we completed our first year as a council. I think we've done great things. We may, you know, we may at times go at each other, but I think in the end of the day, we all come to, you know, we work pretty good together and I'm, I'm pretty proud of that. So again, Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, and talk to you guys next year.
Thank you. Before we move on, I would like to go back to Councilperson Miola really quick. Would you like to move ordinance to and place that in committee? I know we discussed that in caucus.
Yes, Mr. President, if you don't mind, I'd like to motion to move that piece of legislation into committee.
Okay, is there a second?
Beatrice.
All right, we've got Beatrice or McNeil, take your pick, clerks. It's ordinance to amend section two dash two dash one two eight fees of the City of Utica Code regarding FOIL requests. There's a motion to put it in committee, McNeil.
Yeah.
Burmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yes.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Lomarico.
Yay.
Debrango.
Yes.
Thank you. And then one more, Councilman Moody, I believe you had a Commissioner of Deeds that would have been moved. Would you like to move that at this time?
Oh, yes, I forgot I had that. Absolutely. Yes, let's move it.
All right. Is there a second?
Beatrice.
All right, Beatrice, it's resolved that Thomas Alard is going to be a Commissioner of Deeds for a term commencing January first, 2021, ending December thirty first, 2022. Your votes, McNeil.
Yes.
Burmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Lomarico.
Yay.
Debrango.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. President, you skipped me.
I almost did, yeah, yeah, yeah. So.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, that was ninety-eight adopted. Thank you, Councilman Beatrice. All right, Councilman Williamson, or Councilman Beatrice, I believe you said that was all. Is there anything else this evening?
No, thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you. Councilman Williamson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gee, I didn't, wasn't planning on listening to the Surgeon General Report tonight. But anyways, that was great, everybody talking about everything. And I wish everybody a nice holiday season coming up. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Councilman Lomarico, you have the floor.
I'm all set, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Debrango, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna say a couple, obviously, about this term limits. You know, I got a little fired up about that.
It's, it's all right, it's your time.
I know, I know Celeste did speak to some people who voted in ninety-two, but she didn't speak to the people who were deceased. So I just wanted to mention that. I know a lot of members that, that, that were alive in nineteen ninety-two. I was, I, I voted on every election since I was eighteen years old. So I voted in that election as well. This is a compromise. This legislation is a compromise. It's a compromise. You wanted to bring the term limits back to eight years. And I, and I said I will support that. I had no problem supporting that. Councilman Beatrice was the one who brought it up initially. I said I will support it. I originally want to, I wanted to put it on the ballot, get it to the ballot. Obviously, we couldn't do that with the signatures. And this year, it's gonna be even harder with the signatures. So I just wanna make it clear, it's a compromise. If the council members on this council, if they feel that they can get elected four times, and if they wanna run for a fifth and maybe a sixth term, it's their decision. It's nobody else's decision but their own. But you only have two-year terms, so you only be elected for one term. So when we run again, if you decide to run again in two thousand and twenty-one, you know, and if you get elected, then you, you have the option to run in two years again. So it's just a compromise. Some of the council members who supported extending the term limits, I felt that they had a right to, to serve their full term at twelve years. So I, I, I voted for this legislation. So that's all I'm gonna say about that. As far as, I just want everybody to recognize the healthcare workers out there. I mean, you see what's going on with the fire department, the police department. They're frontline workers. You know, we're having some COVID problems there throughout each department. The nurses, the healthcare workers, they're gonna be working through the holidays. They're gonna be taking care of our loved ones. They're gonna be there twenty-four, seven, you know. And it's something that, you know, you just, they kinda, you know, we, we did dedicate, you know, a street for them. And, and they kinda got forgotten in all this right now. You know, with all this COVID, and all these people that with COVID right now. So they were kinda forgotten. They're still out there. They've been out there since day one. They'll be working through Christmas, New Years, twenty-four, seven. You know, hopefully, now that the vaccines just came to our area, they can get vaccinated. And hopefully, they will be, you know, they won't have to worry about bringing COVID home without having it themselves. So just think about them during the holiday times because they're the ones that are putting their lives on the line right now for all of us, trying to keep our loved ones safe. I did, there was a few people took COVID over the, over the, you know, past few weeks. So a few friends that acquaintances of mine. So just keep everybody in their prayers. One thing I, I wanna finish in saying, Happy Holidays to everybody. Stay safe, keep your distance, wear a mask, do everything the CDC is telling us to do. And that is all for two thousand and twenty.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm just gonna wrap it up and say thank you all for contributing your thoughts to our local government. It's appreciated by many. And I hear that all the time, that everything that everyone does, regardless of people's opinion on certain legal aspects at any time, it is absolutely respected by many that everyone is taking the time to contribute. So thank you to that. I'd like to second everything everyone said about all of the frontline workers. It's a lot of work. So let's all have a good holiday season, given the current environment we're in. And I'll call for a motion adjourned if no one has anything else.
Motion.
Beatrice.
All right. Everyone have a great evening. Thank you.